Hey, everyone. Did you know you could watch today's meeting live and on your smart device? Head on over to the Hillsborough County Meetings channel on the YouTube app. Click Subscribe and turn on the notification bell so you can be automatically notified when Hillsborough County Meetings goes live. You can also browse any of our past meetings by swiping to the left and scrolling down. All that's left to do is just to click on the video. It's that easy.
Okay, got some steak. Let's see what's on TV. What's going on?
Hey, guy. Got some dinner there.
Uh, yeah?
Great, great, great. Listen, you mind if tonight we skip the game shows and reruns?
Okay, uh, what do you suggest?
Glad you asked. Just go to Apple TV and type Hillsborough in the search bar.
Okay, done. What's on Hillsborough Television?
Take a look. Hillsborough Television is your connection to the community. They've got behind-the-scenes of your county in action, celebrations of our growing leisure, and business opportunities, and hurricane preparation information.
Wow, I had no idea.
Pretty cool, huh? Now, let's tell them. Just so you know, it really is that easy. Just go to Apple TV, search for Hillsborough, load up the app, and connect to your community.
Tampa Bay is like no place else.
Wait, you can't recycle the bag. You have to throw it away.
Proper recycling keeps it that way for everyone. Bags tangle in machinery and can bring sorting efforts to a halt.
No bags!
Trash the bags and keep our recycling program moving forward.
No, Mommy, no plastic bags.
Do your part to keep our recycling bag-free. Trash the Tanglers or return them to participating retailers. For more information, visit tampa bay recycles.org.
We're gonna call the Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order. Mr. Merrill?
Yes, Commissioner. So, we completed our time certens and we go to the regular agenda, beginning with B2.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item B2 is a request for disbursement from the School District of Hillsborough County in the amount of $23,339,000. This is to fund the construction of Elementary School D. Elementary School D is proposed to be located in the Belmont subdivision, which is east of Highway 301 and, I'm sorry, west of Highway 301 and east of I-75. Included in your backup is a locator map that will show the location of the school, as well as some detail of the school site plan. We have reviewed this site for safe walking distances around the school. This is in a fairly new subdivision that has a road network planned to it, so in that regard, the subdivision does provide sidewalks. There were several gaps identified, and those are being filled in by the school district, as well as an intersection at Gate Dancer Road and Paseo Almar, which is going to receive crosswalk and four-way stop in order to facilitate the safe movement of students to the school. Available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gormley. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thanks. I just had a question. That's good to hear about the roadways and that. I noticed in the backup on this that the request came in June from the school board. I was just wondering why the delay?
So, since we got the request, we've had some discussions with the school district staff and recognized the need for identifying what actual, what the conditions were, particularly the walking conditions around the school. So, between the time we got the request and the time that it's been brought to this board, county staff, public works staff, has gone out and done an assessment of the area and identified the improvements that were needed and the work program to put them into place. And so, that's what occurred during that pendency.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. White, you recognize?
So, we can inquire about pedestrian transportation amenities and that type of thing in connection with a school impact fee transaction? I don't know that I'm...
I'm sorry, I was not clear that the improvements that the county is making are not being funded from school impact fees. That's county general fund that is going to make, to pay for those improvements. The school is constructing the school and adjacent sidewalks and crosswalks to the school all using school impact fee money.
I don't think I asked the question the right way. Can we hold up school impact fee dollars while we're, you know, figuring that sort of thing out, or...
The dispersment of school impact fees is something that, it's at the board's discretion. The ordinance provides for collection of impact fees and the board's approval of a dispersment of impact fees.
So, explain to us again what caused it to land on a December agenda after a June request?
So, the, we know that it's very important to this board, the safe routes to school, how are children gonna walk to school? I've heard this several times from the board. When the request came in, we didn't know what those routes were. We did coordinate with the school district.
So, on those grounds, we can hold them up until we have a satisfactory answer?
Yes. I waited to take this item to the board until I knew that we're in a position to be able to answer the questions that the board has previously asked about that safe routes to school and how are children gonna get to school. So, I recognize that this has been something, and there's been talk about the safety zone around the schools or two-mile walking zone, so we wanted to be prepared to be able to address that with the board with the dispersment request, anticipating that that might be a question that the board may ask.
I don't disagree with you on that, by the way. I mean, you know, my biggest issue is with cars around these schools and just how, frankly, how poorly designed their queuing mechanisms are at times. Mr. Merrill, could that be related to the recent motion that passed at the school board that we talked about, or is that...
It's possible. I think that's a possibility.
Okay. Yeah, we're still trying to get specifics as to what the motion really meant or what it was all about, but...
Right.
Look, I say something to the effect of all school impact fees on deposit, just in lump sum, being released to the school district. And I don't, I don't think I'm a supporter, you know, of that. So, I'd like to understand more about, you know, what that means or, you know, what's going on over there, but...
Yeah, we're...
But hey, if we can use this, this school impact fee dollar transaction as a mechanism to get questions answered or to get infrastructure needs addressed to our satisfaction, I wholeheartedly support that. So, that's good, you know, that we took advantage of that. So, but I'll move approval of the item.
Most of my, Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
I guess, I just wanna ask a question, 'cause this has always been something that's been on my mind about these impact fees. So, they request a sum, we give them the money. Do we get, like, you know how we operate here at the county where it's kind of a reimbursable type thing? Not that we'd wanna get into that, but how do we know that that money was actually, have we ever, do we audit it, or how do we know that, how do you get to that exact amount when you're building a school? Number one. Number two, how are we sure that all the money that they're requesting is actually going to building that school and not something else?
Yes, Commissioner, we do have, and it's in the school board's resolution, we do have an accounting at the end of the construction project.
Okay.
And as part of that, we get documentation of what the actual costs were for the construction of the school. And if any funds that were dispersed are over and above what it costs to build the school, those are refunded back to the county. And we have had those refunds back on several projects that we have closed down.
Oh, you have?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I think probably they're in the same boat that we are, and that's the reason why they ask for the entire amount for the school, because they want to be able to appropriate contracts, large contracts, and if their payments from us are periodic and they don't actually have the cash, it's probably an issue for them to contract in the way that they would like. So, that's why we then have the true-up at the end.
But I'll do a cost savings. Okay, Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
And to your point, Commissioner White, there is, we've had a lot of discussion about school placement, school location, and recently during the NPO meeting, we were talking about the most safe summit conference that just occurred last week or week before last. Lots of discussion about school safety and lots of discussion on specifically school placement not being put on arterial roads or collectors. So, if we run amok of we're holding up their money because we're not liking the way it's working, then we need to change our land code when it comes to placement of schools so it's very clear what is permissible and what's not, if that's an option. Because if our goals are, you know, community schools that have a grid around it that allows walkability and sidewalks and those kinds of things, and we can't, you know, force the school to create that environment, then our code has to. So, in that way, if it's in the code, then we're not playing the high, we're holding money up because we're not liking how, where you're putting all of this, you know, or how we can accommodate the safety we need for our children walking to school. So, I don't know if that'll solve the problem, but I think one thing we need to look at is school placement requirements as part of our land code, if that's something we can do in the future.
And Commissioners, on this particular site, this site has been, we have a school siting process. This site had been previously sited in a, I believe, a 2004, 2005 PD that approved this site for a, for a school. What we were looking at was less on whether that's the appropriate location, because that had already been decided in the zoning, but the infrastructure that was associated with that school to get children there. For instance, we had some discussions just as of several weeks ago, we got plans in that then showed crosswalks and showed the transition of the infrastructure that the community was building into the school. There had been a gap there before, and those are the type of things that we were trying to not bring before the board and trying to resolve those before we brought it to the board.
Yeah, Adam, I think what Commissioner's asking is that, going forward in the future, can this board, by virtue of their authority over land use and land development code, place conditions on the school district as to where they will place future schools, keeping in mind all of the factors of transit, housing? I think that's what you're, you know, and I don't know to what extent this board has that ability.
We have that ability, the board has that ability to some degree. We currently have an interlocal agreement that deals with school siting, and that school siting process is the ideal place to deal with. That is the time to talk about location of the school and to some degree, design and what's built. But the location of it would be something we'd look at as part of the school siting process. There are requirements in the land development code and how the site is designed, but in terms of where the school goes, it's a function of the siting interlocal agreement. And part of that is an analysis of whether adequate public facilities are available or will be available to serve the school. So, we are, the last few schools that have come before this board have been approved in prior PDs. I think we're in the realm now where we're gonna be having some siting discussions with the school, and we'll be able to look at those locations relative to the current siting agreement. And if there's further discussion on making changes to that process, the appropriate vehicle would be through the interlocal agreement.
So, in that, in what we were discussing this morning about policy, that needs to be incorporated in those meetings, that we develop a policy on how we're gonna approach, you know, a community building and school placement as part of our overall comprehensive plan, as well as how it feeds into our land code. 'Cause I think we can accomplish that and not do what we are doing and have been doing for many last years, is, well, that was already approved. You can't do anything about that. And I wanna stop that process now. Thank you.
Well, the school district is asking this board to increase school impact fees, and so that might be an appropriate time to say, you know, we wanna relook at the interlocal agreement, since that governs all of these issues, and we want these changes to the interlocal agreement to address these before you increase impact fees, just as a suggestion.
Mr. White, you recognize?
Question for you that's completely hypothetical, but could we, could we no longer participate in an interlocal agreement and just handle school siting completely through the LDC, or...
I believe we have a statutory requirement to have an interlocal agreement that deals with school siting.
Got it, okay. That, yeah, that's important, okay. And just to be clear on my line of questioning, I just wanted to understand what I was speaking to before I started speaking, but I wholeheartedly support the use of that ability to leverage or to use those dollars as a leveraging tool to the extent that we can, until such time that we can make improvements to the interlocal agreement or whatever needs to happen, so...
Sure. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
This is quick, but then what do you do about charter schools? I mean, it is different, but it shouldn't be. So, I, I mean, that's the discussion I've had with staff before, and I think they've gotta be a part of the discussion on this.
Okay. We have a mindful admission creep. We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman, to approve item B2. Since no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thanks, Adam. B4, Fire Rescue.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dennis Jones, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue Fire Chief. And we're asking that you approve an interlocal agreement with the City of Tampa Fire Rescue for provision of fire and emergency response services in the unincorporated areas of Hillsborough County, north of the city limits to the county line. This includes areas such as Pebble Creek, Cross Creek, East Meadows, and other subdivisions, including Wharton High School. The county will pay for the services at the rate of $150,000 per quarter. This will begin January the first, and it will be annually adjusted on October 1st at a rate of 5.8%. And the agreement would be in perpetuity until it is discontinued by either side. And we do have sufficient funds in our budget and prepared to answer any questions on the item.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman, and Commissioner White. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a great item for New Tampa. Restoring city service was the very first issue I worked with Mayor Castor on once she got elected, and I wanna thank her for her leadership on this issue. It's completely supported by the community, evidenced by the nine letters of support we received from the HOAs. The agreement essentially reinstates our previous agreement with the City of Tampa on fire rescue service in New Tampa that was in effect for over 20 years. It's a good deal for the county and the city, and it's critically important for our residents in New Tampa, because this will improve response times. And I wanna just thank the chief, thank our staff for working very hard on this, and wasn't gonna make the motion, but happy to support it.
All right. Pardon me? Okay, Commissioner Merman takes her motion back. Commissioner Hagan, would you like to make a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, who's gonna second it? We have a motion now by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Overman. You still wanna wait and second on this, too? And Commissioner White. Since no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to board appointments for the Industrial Development Authority.
Before we start, Ron Rico Smith has withdrawn his application. He would like to be considered for the Planning Commission, which will be coming up, and if he's appointed to this board, he wouldn't be considered. So, it would be either Jake Hoffman or if the board directs me to re-advertise the board.
Didn't we re-advertise this before?
No, this is the third time this one has come back.
The third time it's coming back for what reason? Can you remember?
We originally, it was in October 16th it came back, and then it came back November 6th, and now today.
Okay. And we re-advertized it twice then, is what you're saying?
No, we haven't re-advert, since it's come before the board, we have not re-advertized it.
All right, it's been deferred. Commissioner, you recognize?
And there lies, I kicked it back the last time. This position calls for a member that is knowledgeable in finance, economic development, planning, and financing of large capital improvements. We now have one candidate that has no experience in any one of these fields on his application. This individual works in digital media, and although he has a master's in entrepreneurship, this degree does not truly relate to finance or economic development. Further, his work experience does not demonstrate any experience in these three fields. As such, I move we re-advertize this appointment for the application, for applicants that meet the minimum or minimal requirements of this position, especially for a position with a four-year term on such an important board.
A motion by Commissioner Overman, and then a second by Commissioner Kemp. Is any further discussion? Since no, Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Do you know if we have any recommendation from the IDA on this candidate?
Yes, it was in your original backup and...
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Kemp to defer and re-advertize this position. Since no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner White, voting no.
Mr. Merrill?
Next item is F2, Commissioner Kemp's item.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. We'll talk about the urban service area again today. As you all know, I have been adamant about the fact that we should start to make growth pay for itself here in Hillsborough County, or at least get as close as we possibly can to doing so. That's the way I believe that we prosper and we become a sustainable community and county in the future. We aren't even close to doing that, and we're far behind other counties in Florida, including Manatee, Pasco, and Polk. So, I wanna first put up a map of our mobility fee assessment district, so y'all can be clear about what it is that we're looking at. Do we have that map? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, thank you, okay. And so, I just wanna explain, I know that, for the most part, this group understands the urban service line and how it works, but... the urban service line and how it works, but also for the public here, the darker brown area there is the rural service area. The cream-colored area is the urban service area. And there is a scheme that we put in place about what we charge in mobility fees for each of these areas. And it's the same mobility fee in the rural service area in the darker brown and the same in the cream-colored area. But there's one exception to the whole system that we put in place, and that's that hatched area right there, and that is outside the urban service area. It's in the rural service area, and that is RP2 outside of the urban service area. And I understand how this can be confusing, but that is an area that is outside our urban service area line, which is in all the rural service areas, all the darker area. We charge two different fees for our mobility fees in these areas according to what size home, or whether it's a mobile park home, or a multifamily home. But only one exception to this whole scheme was made in rural Hillsborough County, and those are the planned villages of 160 acres or more in the rural RP2 area that pay the lower mobility fee, and that's those hatched areas that you can see on this. They are exceptional in what they pay. Transportation impact fees must be collected from developers to support the transportation infrastructure needs being created by housing development rapidly occurring in unincorporated Hillsborough area and county. The discount for the rural RP2 area adds up to tens of millions of transportation dollars lost by the county on each of these large developments, which have hundreds of, or sometimes more than 1,000 homes. Some have come before us just recently. For example, in 2019, the mobility fee for a 2,500-square-foot, single-family home being developed in the rural area is $7,246. So in the brown area, that's what they would be paying. However, developers of the massive RP2 planned villages, the hatched area, pay the urban fee, the far lower urban fee, which is only $5,006 per home. So this, I know we've talked a lot about how we don't have money to do this for roads, we don't have money to make improvements, but we are losing on every single development approved there, on every single home, we're losing about $2,250 each time, and it's adding up to tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars that we are losing that can be invested in our road infrastructure through mobility fees there. The rural RP2 area that you see includes 11,559 acres in South Hillsborough County and contains many roads. In fact, and I didn't set this up, but the speaker who came this morning to talk is right in the middle of these roads. She was saying how they needed something, a stoplight, a, a roundabout something to control traffic. We heard about that this morning. The roads included in this area include Boyette Road, Baum Boyette Road, Rodine Road, Baum Riverview Road, Big Ben Road, Triple Creek Boulevard, Baum Road, Baum Wy Mama Road, and County Road 672. And I know I have gotten hundreds, if not thousands, of emails about the roads and the needs in this area, and so why we're doing a special discount for only this one little part of the rural area, when actually, to me, instead of a discount, we should charge a premium, because these are really substandard roads that we're throwing a lot of development on, and yet we're not even charging the rural urban, the rural fee that we need to be charging to make sure that at least there's a modacom. And our, by the way, even the fees that we charge now are far lower than Manatee, Polk, and Pasco, I assure you. I've looked it all up. This mobility fee discount for developers in massive residential subdivisions in the rural area needs to be repealed. These developments are far from job centers. They create enormous transportation impacts and dangerous road conditions by pouring cars and truck traffic on substandard rural roads that were not designed for tens of thousands of vehicles a day. This discount violates Hillsborough County's comprehensive plan policies, as you know, by incentivizing sprawl development outside the urban service boundary, and by failing to require developers to cover, I say here, the full cost, but actually even just a greater part of the cost, because even the higher fee won't cover the full cost of infrastructure serving the planned villages in the RP2 areas required by the plan. At the very least, all impact generating development in the RP2 area should be required to pay the higher rural mobility fee. So my motion is this, to direct staff to set a public hearing, January 23rd, 2020, to amend the mobility fee ordinance and repeal the discount currently in effect for developers of large housing developments outside the urban service area boundary in the residential planned 2 area, known as the RP2, in South Hillsborough County, and require that developers of all impact generating development in the rural area, including the planned villages, pay the full amount of the rural mobility fee.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Quick question. This only, this little anomaly here of the RP2 and impact fees, this only applies to, does this only apply to mobility fees? And no other impact fees are, are charged at the urban rate out here, so just, just mobility fees? Yes, unless you've got a.
Yes, you're correct. It's, it's, this is only the mobility fee ordinance, it's not in the other impact fees.
Yes, thank you. And I remember learning about this, oh, when a, a big project came up some time back out in that area, and I was just appalled to, to learn that they would be paying rural or, or urban level, or the lower urban level impact fees in the, essentially the rural area. We have this misconception that we heard here a couple of times today, and I've been hearing from constituents, Commissioners, you have development overwhelming our roads in Southeast County. Why don't you spend the impact fees that you're getting from development to fix it? And we heard that even from Jennifer Motzinger today and, and others, that, that the real problem is we just need to spend our impact fees better. The truth is, we don't have, we're, we're not charging anywhere near enough impact fees to cover the cost of development. If development was paying for itself, we would be swimming in cash. We would have roads and roundabouts and, and complete streets, as well as water, plants, galore. But we are in the hole because we're not charging enough impact fees. And this is really, as we discuss, all that low-hanging fruit to write a, an oddity here that, that, that should, simply should not be. These are, there's a, these developments are creating huge negative impacts on these roads. We need them to be paying the urban-style development if they're, if, the developments that they're doing are, so far we've seen 40-foot-wide lots with five-foot setbacks. It's urban-style development, it's urban-style impacts. They need to be paying urban-style impact fees. And thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, just a question for staff. Every time we amend an ordinance, we have to open up the ordinance, have hearings, and give notice and all that. So I guess this gets my point. I'm not saying I'm against this, because I'm not necessarily against it, but the fact that we're having this workshop on the 19th, and we're going to be discussing all these impact fees and mobility fees and school impact fees at that time, I just really think that this needs to go on that list of things to discuss. It's two weeks from now, and move forward. So I really, you know, I, I prefer, I wish you would just defer it until after that discussion, so we can see the whole picture of all the fees and, and move forward after that. So that's my request, though I'm sure you probably don't want to do that, but maybe you'll consider it. But I can't support it today because I think we'd be piecemealing it. As our county attorney said, we'd have to open up that ordinance. I mean, then we have to do it for all these other things we're going to discuss at that workshop, and I think we ought to do it all at once. So that's my thoughts.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Actually, I think we piecemealed it when it was put together, and I think it's time to just correct this one discreet piece of it. And I've been asking about getting this one discreet piece brought back, not the whole thing, just this, one little thing that affects and is very unfair to all of the taxpayers of the county who are having to pay and make up for this lack of infrastructure and the lack of charge. I've been asking for this to be brought up for at least nine months or, or, or longer. And I just decided to put it on myself because I know it's a very simple correction to do, and it doesn't, you know, I, so I, I really want to keep it on there for January, and we can talk about it as part of the workshop, that's fine, but, you know, I think we just need to move on with this and get this done.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp, I mean, Commissioner Merman, I do agree with you. I think we need to wait, have the discussion on the 19th and then do it after a point in time. So I won't be supporting this, this motion. So a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith to approve item F2. Without further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Merman, Miller, and Hagan, would it know?
Mr. Merman.
That takes us to item F3, Commissioner Merman's item.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, I'd like to ask Paul to come forward. I think he is going to.
I can explain it also.
Okay. Why don't you? I thought, I'm getting confused. I thought Paul was on this one, I'm sorry.
This is relating to short-term rentals, and the background, just a little bit of background information, the, the state actually passed a statute in 2011 that preempted local government regulation. However, they grandfathered in those counties who were already regulating. And so we are one of the fortunate counties that were already regulating short-term rentals. It's required to be at least a seven-day stay if you're in Hillsborough County. So that part is good, but there are some additional tools to help with the enforcement. I think that's what Commissioner Merman is directing here. We did some research and found that there's a few communities, Miami and a couple of others, who have started requiring a registry, which would basically help code enforcement and other enforcement agencies know who to, who to be looking at and who to enforce. So this would just start the process of researching that more fully and then bringing back a draft ordinance. And then there's also a communications piece and a financial analysis piece.
Right. And I think this is really coming, I'm bringing this here because I'm having significant issues with this in Apollo Beach. They're like, I mean, they're just not adhering to any rules, I mean, any respect, I guess, of the neighborhood. It's, it's becoming a big problem. And so I just want, I'd like to ask, my motion is direct the county attorney's office and code enforcement, prepare, propose ordinance to establish a registry requirement for short-term rentals for the, for our consideration, direct code enforcement, neighborhood relations to develop a communications plan, and also direct the county administrator to evaluate any financial impact. And this is really to eliminate the abuse, I think, that's going on. City of Tampa is having the same problem, and we're working closely with them on, you know, having similar policies between the two governments. But I think it's something we really need to do because there is just a lot of abuse on this issue, and with Super Bowl coming up next year, I think that this will enable us to have a tool in the toolbox to really eliminate any problems.
A motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, I, I thank you so much for bringing this forward and for, for your work on figuring out what we can do, given, so there's so much we can't do, but to, to figure out what we can do, because it can be a real problem. I think I mentioned that the house next to me, before it was finally sold to some wonderful people, was being rented out on one of those Airbnb sites, and it was, it was awful. People coming for, especially really short-term, and, and they just don't, they just think they're at a hotel, or I don't know, a frat house, or what.
Frat house.
Yeah. So thank you so much for, for doing this, and I hope to work with you on this as much as you need.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I'm curious, in, in this particular case, we're, we're looking at the code and the registry, but does it actually, are there other methods of, of determining whether or not our minimum rental stay rules are being adhered to? So for example, I know, you know, we, there's Airbnbs all throughout our neighborhood, and the challenge with the demand for Airbnbs is it's actually also limiting what we have in the available housing units for people who want to live here, because the profit margins are oftentimes so high. And they're high because you can rent, you know, if they're charging a seven-day rate every three days, clearly, we're not renting for seven days.
That's correct.
So if, you know, if there's ways that we can get some reporting data from the services that are utilized for advertising available Airbnbs, if we're not having access to that data or that reporting, it's going to be very difficult to, to enforce the law. So is that part of what you're attempting to put into this specific toolbox for our code enforcement personnel?
May I?
Yes. Yes. Actually, there is a way tracked through the tax collector's office. As you know, they have to, I guess they report their income to the tax collector's office, and so you can follow it that way. And we will do that.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
I also, thank you. I also want to thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's a really important discussion to have, and I know that I had heard prior over the years of the issues that Commissioner Smith had with the Airbnb next door, getting sleep and things like that.
Oh, no.
But at any rate, I, just for Thanksgiving, was in Austin, where my son now lives, and my daughter lives in Toronto. And interestingly enough, in both places, while I was there, a conversation cut, came up about the, what they're doing in those communities, and, and I had no idea that Toronto was on scale with the size of Los Angeles and New York, but, and Austin is now under discussion about what they're going to do in terms of Airbnbs. And the concern has been, as, as Commissioner Overman outlined, that, that they are being, they're, they're very concerned about their availability of affordable housing, as it has raised the rates and narrowed the availability. And what Toronto did, and what Austin is apparently poised to do, is that you could only do Airbnbs in places where you already lived, that you could only rent out rooms or, for instance, a mother-in-law's apartment next to your home or as part of where you are occupied. So I just thought, because they, they feel like that, you know, brings income to someone, but also there's controls placed in that, as well as limitations, instead of having somebody own 50 Airbnbs, a de facto business, commercial business, hotel, whatever. So anyway, I just wanted to, to bring that up, and thank you for bringing this up. I think it's high time for us to be looking at it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Smith to approve item F3. Without further discussion, please record your vote.
That's why I did.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mr. Merman.
Item F4.
Mr. Merman.
Thank you. This is from, of course, we did the vaping ordinance at our last board meeting, and part of the discussion was around restricting, you can't restrict the smoking. We are preempted by the state government, but we are not preempted to which other communities are doing to restrict the sale or delivery of tobacco products to people under. are doing to restrict the sale or delivery of tobacco products to people under age 21. The legislature is currently, there is a bill that may take care of this. So I'd like to direct the County Attorney and Code Enforcement to work with our sheriff's office to research and bring back to the board for consideration an ordinance to restrict the sale or delivery of tobacco products to persons under 21 years of age. And I don't have to tell you all the benefits of why we would want to do that, but they're going to do the research and bring back to us, make sure it's legal and goes by everything. I don't know, Paul, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. So that's my motion.
Another motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White to approve item F4. Senator, for the discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Ms. Merrill.
And the last regular item is G1. It's scorecard reports from Affordable Housing, Homeless Services, and Social Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Michael Pottshead from Management and Budget. We have three more departments with their scorecard presentations, Affordable Housing, Homeless Services, and Social Services. A lady that walks on water.
Cheryl Howell, Affordable Housing. Good to be here this afternoon. And today, I'd like to report to you some of our key performance indicators. In Affordable Housing, our mission really is to improve the quality of life for Hillsborough County residents through providing affordable housing, community development, and economic opportunities while delivering the highest level of service. In terms of keeping in with community prosperity, we looked at three different areas that we impact. We probably impact all of them, but these are the three key areas. The number one is strong and sustainable local economy. Number four would be self-sufficient individuals and families. And number five is high-quality community assets. So I'll start with the first one. We work with our partners to develop and maintain relationships to provide multifamily and single-family housing preservation, rehabilitation of homes and multifamily apartments, and new construction activities as well, to ensure long-term sustainability for families. And we also provide a strong compliance piece to that as well. We partner with our internal and external community organizations to provide services that improve the quality of life for at-risk families and individuals. And we also, thank you. And we also partner with our community organizations to create, sustain, and provide access to public facilities, infrastructure, and other community assets that benefit low- and moderate-income neighborhoods and the lives of those people who live there. We work with the city of Temple Terrace and the city of Plant City. They're our urban county partners. I think for us, one place I'd like to start is how we have historically received our funding. Because for us, that has determined what we've done before in the past. When we look at our revenues, we receive home funding, CDBG funding, ESG, which is Emergency Shelter Grant, and SHIP funding, which is our state funding. When we look at the expenditures over that period of time, 43% of the funding has been spent towards housing activities. 32% has been spent towards public facilities and infrastructure improvements in low-to-moderate-income areas. We have 10% that was spent on public services, 12% for admin and planning and compliance, and then another 3% for other type of activities such as appraisals and things of that nature. I want to go back to Affordable Housing for a minute. When we think about multifamily development, oftentimes, we don't think about how much it really costs. So for us, if we put a million dollars towards a project or $3 million towards a project, sometimes the average citizen feels that that's a lot of money that's going towards that project. So I got two examples for you. The first is Sweetwater Villas. Sweetwater Villas has a capital stack of $11.3 million. And with that, 80% are actually public funds, with 20% of that being private funding. But Hillsborough County put in $4.5 million. Now, this is a 4% tax credit deal. It has 56 units. It's a great apartment complex. It was done by Blue Sky. And then there was about a half a million dollars of developer, deferred developer fee on this. But if you notice, there's only $1.8 million of debt on this property. The reason that there's only $1.8 million of debt on this property is because this property is designed to serve extremely low and very low-income families, which means that it doesn't get enough income to support a lot of debt. The next example I have is Lamburnum Gardens. And some of you were there at that grand opening. Now, this one is a 9% tax credit deal. It has 81 units. Hillsborough County put in $275,000, considerably less money than what we put into the 4% tax credit deal. This was a $17.7 million project. $17.7 million. It had about a three-quarter of a million-dollar deferred developer fee, and then, again, only $1.8 million of private debt on this property. It's also for families, 60%, and a portion is 30% and below median family income. I highlighted those two projects in particular because we've been talking about Affordable Housing. It's been on the radar, and I think it's important to understand what the capital structure is and how we fit into the pieces of the puzzle. But Affordable Housing does so much more than just Affordable Housing. We do public infrastructure, public services, and public facility projects as well. So I'll talk a little bit more about how we've impacted lives over this past year. In 2019, we were able to impact 8,983 families, and we expended a total of $10.4 million. And so when I looked at how we delivered those services, we delivered a plethora of services. We assisted with public services, with Tampa Lighthouse for the Blind. We helped to create opportunities for women going into construction. We worked on parks for any of you that were there a couple of weeks ago, University Area CDC. There was a huge grand opening there. It was just beautiful. And these are some ways that we contribute to our communities. But the staff costs are some of the things that I wanted to focus on how we deliver those services. We have a very lean, a very mean staff with a great customer service. So it costs us approximately $5.76 per household to deliver public facilities and infrastructure services. So when we look at those contracts and the number of families that we're able to impact, when we look at the Wild Mama area and the project that we're doing down there with enterprising Latinas, we're creating a tremendous amount of impact for a very good cost. In terms of our personnel and operating costs for public services, we leverage those dollars and we are able to deliver those services for $1.03 per household. In terms of activities to ensure long-term sustainability and compliance, it costs $28.34 to deliver an apartment or a single-family rehab. And it costs $10.42, I'm sorry, for the new construction activities. And so that's a tremendous amount of impact for the staff to deliver those services. And so I feel that the Hillsborough County residents are really getting a good bang for their buck. And then I want to talk a little bit about why we do what we do. I have a slide here of Ms. Wilson. Ms. Wilson is a 75-year-old resident of Plant City. She's been living in her home for over 40 years. She's been going to the same church for over 40 years. Her son, who is a disabled veteran, lives with her, and she began having problems with her home. And so because she's elderly, because they're on a limited income, they were not able to make the improvements in her home. And so we work with, rebuilding together Tampa Bay, and they came in and they provided those improvements for her. And that not only changed her life, but it also changed the community in which she lives. The other slide I have for you is Lamburnum Gardens. And so we had a couple of commissioners that were at that ground opening, and it was just beautiful seeing the people that were going into their new homes. It was absolutely gorgeous. And when you pass by affordable housing apartment complexes that we've invested in, you wouldn't know the difference. You wouldn't know that it was an affordable housing development, not by looking at it. And our people come from various different places in life, but they have one common goal, and that's to live a decent life. And then here, I have, well, I have a video. And on this video, I think this guy really is, he tells the story. So... Mm-hmm. Okay. I just want to, I'll tell his story. This was for Cedar Point. And Cedar Point is an 84-unit apartment complex that we went into partnership with Tampa Housing Authority. This gentleman had been living on the streets for a year. He went into deep depression after he lost his wife. He thought that he would never, ever find home again. And he found Tampa Housing Authority and Cedar Point. And he spoke so eloquently about what his new home meant to him, and how he had regained hope in life because of what you do, because of the projects that you support, because of your commitment to affordable housing. I don't think that I can share with you how beautiful his story was. But what I can share with you is that I see the lives of many that are changed each and every day, and it certainly is a pleasure and an honor to be serving, so.
Ms. Howell, thank you very much for what you do. Well, I think we hear all kind of comments today about the work that you're doing for us in Hillsborough County, and that you're out there in the community, and you're out there doing what we ask you to do, and you're going above and beyond. That's why I said, here comes a lady that walks on water. So I didn't say give advice to God, I said walk on water. So thank you so very much. Commissioner Overman, do you want to say something now?
Yeah, I want to thank you very much for helping us all celebrate the amazing work the Affordable Housing Department does. And when we were looking at your presentation, and you gave yourself checkmarks for Area 1, and 4, and 5, and didn't have comment on Area 2, which is enhanced public safety, or Number 3, which is life enrichment and recreational opportunities, I think we have a measuring device failure here. And it actually also is a great opportunity for us to recognize how much you, adding Affordable Housing and adding housing units to communities does in the way to add public safety and enhance public safety. Because when people have a safe roof over their head, that reduces our crime, reduces our drag, reduces our drug addiction, reduces the problems we have in the area of public safety. It also enriches our lives. It creates community. It helps those communities that are becoming community and offering ways that the people get together and do fun stuff. You know, the mixed developments that you're creating with community rooms where classes are being taught to both children and seniors is life enrichment and recreational opportunities. So you left yourself off the table. And I think what's critically important is we do measure that. Because when we go to Tallahassee and we help them understand that we need Sadowski protected, we can make the argument that it's more about what we're adding value and creating the safety net within our communities. So I think that's an important part of our measuring, is to measuring what you're truly bringing to a community, and I can't thank you enough for all that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. We're looking at homeless services now? Going to go with social services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and Mr. Merrill. Audrey Seigler, Social Services Department. First of all, I really want to say thank you for taking time today to hear a little bit more about the Social Services Department. I know you all know a lot about it because I receive numerous calls, email messages, and CRMs from your offices almost on a daily basis, trying to get customers, residents that are seeking services connected. And usually, we're able to work together and get those services to them quickly and resolve those circumstances, those crises, quickly so that people's circumstances don't get even worse. We've done some research, and surrounding counties don't offer the services we offer. So I really am thankful for the time today to say thank you for what you do and for supporting the department, because with the situations of the transportation and affordable housing, we really do need these crisis services. So thank you. A quick overview, and I know you all know this because I spoke to you all recently about the homeless prevention program, but the crisis intervention services we offer are homeless prevention services, and that's where we stabilize households who are about to become evicted. They're facing eviction, can't pay their bill, and we're able to stabilize them during that month. We're also able to work with them closely so that they can hopefully avoid a financial crisis in the future. We also offer utility bill assistance that serves as a bridge, allowing low-income households to avoid electricity shut-offs. And this program is oftentimes used as a budgeting tool so that folks that experience high-energy bills, which they will with this cold snap, are able to keep their electricity on, their food fresh, and lights on for their children to do the homework. We also offer a self-sufficiency program, which empowers low-income individuals and families in moving towards achieving financial independence. I thought I would start off by giving you a little bit of information about the customers we serve.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a problem with the computer and...
It looks good over here. I needed Felicia.
Security. There you go.
Okay. So I wanted to give you a little bit more information about the customers we serve. I put together a profile, and this is information from the last fiscal year, but it also holds true for the last three years. It's pretty consistent, except for the vulnerable population, which I'll mention when we get So I wanted to give you a little bit more information about the customers we serve. I put together a profile, and this is information from the last fiscal year, but it also holds true for the last three years. It's pretty consistent, except for the vulnerable population, which I'll mention when we get to that one. So 99% of the households we serve or served in the last year have a shelter obligation of more than 50% of their monthly income. 96% of assistance provided to households that meet the vulnerable population criteria... Am I okay? And that vulnerable population criteria is defined as a school-aged child or younger in the home, someone 60 years or older, or someone that's disabled. And that was a new, a new part of the program that we included, recognizing that the demand for services was so high that we had to add a prioritization. So now we serve the most vulnerable first. 50% of assistance is provided to single-parent head of households. 68% of assistance is provided to residents with education level that is less than a high school diploma or GED. 51% of households served have income below the 75% of the poverty guidelines. So the guidelines that we adhere to, that are by our funding sources, say that we can assist sometimes up to 125% of the federal poverty guideline, up to 150%. And we know that half of our customers are at 75% of the poverty guideline. What that looks like for a family of three, so if it's a mother or father with two dependent children, is about a household income of $1,300 a month. And then, as you saw in a previous, a previous information, their shelter obligation is almost or more than half of that. So with an income of $1,300 paying $700, $800, we can see quickly why they're in crisis and why we have these crisis services.
Audrey, why don't you hang on just a second? Can you just kill this? This isn't...
I don't know.
Why can't they do this upstairs? I don't understand.
I can continue if they're okay. Are you okay with me continuing?
Yeah, just go ahead.
Let me see where I left off. 50% of residents served do not own a vehicle or have reliable transportation. And sometimes, in most circumstances, the families are dealing with multiple of these, these different circumstances. The next slide that I had for you was a few success stories so that you could see how all of these programs impact different households. For the Family Empowerment Program, which is the self-sufficiency program, we have a family here. Erica is a single mother, recently separated. She's 40 years old with three children, ages five, four, and nine months old. She entered the 12-month program with a part-time job, working less than 25 hours a week. Due to her recent marital separation, her household income was reduced significantly, and she was not able to afford childcare or retain her part-time job or seek even a full-time position. Her goals when she entered the program were to increase her employment hours to full-time, set up childcare for her children, and begin saving money for financial stability as a newly single mother. As a result of the participation, as participation in the program, Erica was able to secure childcare, obtain full-time employment, open a savings account saving over $1,600, purchase a family computer, and four new tires for her vehicle. Today, Erica is also receiving weekly child support payments and has maintained her full-time position as an assistant paralegal for a law firm. She's earning $22 an hour with the option of occasional overtime, and through her employment, she receives medical, dental, vision, life insurance, disability, and retirement benefits. Erica is now able to maintain her housing, her vehicle utilities, and her childcare. Another example of one of the programs we offer is a disaster recovery service. In May 2019, Desiree, Matthew, and two children, ages 10 and 2, lost their home in a fire. The fire not only destroyed their mobile home and all of their belongings, but also killed their three pets. Desiree is employed in retail industry earning $13 an hour, and Matt is employed as a distributor earning almost $17 an hour, but they did not have homeowner's insurance and did not have the financial means to reestablish anywhere. Social Services assisted the family with the cost for a security deposit and two months' rent to move into an apartment. The family has never applied for assistance from the county before this crisis and is typically $800 a month over income guideline for services. The Social Services Department assistants provide a relief to the family and reduce additional financial hardship. The Youth Empowerment Program, this young lady sent us this thank you card not too long ago, right when we were putting this presentation together, and I pulled her essay that she submitted for the scholarship program. And her father was murdered when she was young, and she was raised by a single mom. And so when I read her, when I read her thank you card, it really, it really hit home as to how successful this college scholarship program is into helping youth recognize their financial dreams and not necessarily have to graduate in debt, in financial debt from college. She says, "I am one of your 2019 scholarship recipients. I would like to thank you and your organization for allowing me to focus on my educational goals rather than my financial obligations. Your help is greatly appreciated by me and my family. My mother and I are so thankful and grateful, and my father is smiling down from heaven. Education is a priority. Thanks again for your help and allowing me to follow my dreams and reach my educational goals." Kiara. So the next slide I have highlights the value that the services, the Social Services Department brings to the county residents. So we do have a few things listed in quite a few of the categories. Under strong and sustainable local economy, we administer the self-sufficiency program to increase employment opportunities and earning potential. We administer the Youth Empowerment Program to break the cycle of poverty by providing support such as college education supports. For enhanced public safety, we coordinate emergency shelter feeding and recovery efforts as the county's lead for the Emergency Support Function 6, which is mass care, and that's a new role for Social Services. So we're currently training over 800 employees and volunteers to manage the emergency shelters, and we're also coordinating with the school district to have 50 shelters prepared for up to 50,000 evacuees should we need that. We partner with code enforcement to provide emergency housing, food, and other basic supplies to displaced victims due to a local fire or a vacate order when their home is determined uninhabitable. For life enrichment and recreational opportunities, we provide out-of-school care to youth, thereby allowing their guardians to seek or maintain education or employment. We provide free membership and program access to low-income and vulnerable residents through the YMCA partnership. And another example is we offer health, social, emotional, and physical development activities through a university-area community development corporation partnership. And last, of course, but not least, is our self-sufficient individuals and families. Enable individuals to build skills and gain stable employment through tuition assistance and job training services. We help motivated individuals and families achieve financial independence by developing goal-based case plans and providing financial assistance for up to 12 months. And we prevent homelessness for residents who require stabilization and are in danger of losing their shelter or utility service. And the last slide that I have for you kind of wraps up our performance metrics and some information that I think will be meaningful to you, has how it really relates to specific families and the numbers of families we serve. So for the Crisis Intervention Program, we assisted over 9,600 families last year, and those families, those households included over 26,000 people. The budget for that program is a little over $5 million. 64% of those households come back and see us again from multiple crises. On average, the crises really don't cost us that much, but to them, $550 bucks up to $1,100 means a lot. So when they walk out, they're not, they're not thinking about the same crisis that they came in with. Crises are resolved in five days or less, with 47% of those crises resolved the same day that they're in our office. 101 households assisted with the recovery after being a victim of a fire, and 2,400 food insecure households received fresh food and assistance. And we also coordinate additional services through partnerships with nonprofits, faith-based organizations, and other internal county departments. For the self-sufficiency programs, we assisted 457 households, and the budget for that is from our CSBG grant, which is a little over $1 million. 450 of those individuals did complete their educational goals. 84 individuals obtained employment. 87 households completed a basic financial coaching workshop, and that's in partnership with Cooperative Extension, and they were in the paper today touting their program, and that's, that's actually our program that we partner with them for. 169 children received out-of-school care for guardians to be able to work. 46 young adults were awarded the CSBG College Scholarship this year. And we do have a 21-member tripartite board for the CSBG grant, and many of you have people appointed on that board for fiduciary oversight. And at the very bottom, I want to highlight that we do manage contracts, agreements, and partnerships with several agencies and nonprofits, and we serve another 1,500 households annually with about another $1.6 million. So again, I want to thank you for your support. I apologize for my technical difficulties, and I hope this was informative and gave you a little bit of an overview of what we do at those community resource centers. Thank you.
Seigler, thank you very much for you and what all your staff does for this county. Appreciate it very much. Ms. Obermann, Commissioner Obermann, you recognize?
Thank you very much for the amazing work that you and your departments do. I, we send a lot of phone calls your way, and, because we get a lot of them. But, you know, earlier today, we established the Commission Against Human Trafficking, and frequently, victims of human trafficking, whether it be labor and/or sex trafficking, their biggest crisis and how they got there was because they had the lack of a roof over their head, or they were desperate to have one. And homeless services, as well as affordable housing, is a way of tackling that, as a way of creating that underpinning. So the work that you do is vitally important. And when we change that, we can change an awful lot in a lot of people's lives, especially our children, those that are, that are in the foster system are hugely at risk. And so, and a lot of parents are afraid of losing their kids because they find themselves in a situation where one emergency suddenly put them in a position of being homeless. So the work you do is amazing, and thank you very much for it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd like to comment on that. We actually have a meeting with the Assessment Center at the end of next week to talk about having a presence, a social services presence at that Assessment Center, so that hopefully we can be part of the solution and not have those children removed.
I'm very happy to hear that. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you, and I just want to commend you on doing a very good job in spite of your technical difficulties in soldiering on and informing us. It was a very good presentation. Maybe without the slides, your passion and your compassion, passion for the job, compassion for the clients that you serve, really shines through and impresses me that these people are in very good hands in your department, and I very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kip, you recognize?
Thank you. Yeah, I just also wanted to add my thanks. I know I've been to many of the events, especially at the senior centers around the county, and it is just deeply impressive to see the staff and how warm and caring those centers are and how much they mean to people that congregate there and have a place for community to make community. So I just, again, want to thank you, and I'm actually very pleased that this year, because I noticed when we went to $15 an hour, or I guess it will be kicking in in January for total, but many of the people on our Social Services staff were, some of our lower-paid employees. So I, I think they deserve all the compensation we could possibly make for them monetarily, but we can't possibly even do what we, the thank you from the community and from this board for their great work.
Thank you so much.
Continue walking on water also.
Thank you. I do want to say, you know, I never want to be in front of a microphone, and now I can't get away. Commissioner Meriman will tell you there was a time when our customer service wasn't where it needs to be, and we're at 98%. So you're right, we have a great staff, and they love what they do, and I'm very fortunate. We're very fortunate to have them.
I can tell you about Lee Davis.
That's right. You can tell me about the lines wrapped around the door. So we've come a long way, and unfortunately, these people are living in some dire situations. One, you know, one child in their home outgrowing their tennis shoes and needing to buy a new pair of shoes can really make the difference in their budget, so...
I'm sorry. Hold on, Commissioner Meriman wants to talk...
Well, I'd say the best for last, no. I mean, I can't, I want to say she's one of my faves in this place because when she first came here, I mean, literally, we stole her from the Sheriff's Department.
You did.
Yes, we did. And I just remember that so well. Carl, if Carl's still here, he probably remembers. But, no, you've, you've really dug in and you know how to help people. And that's, I know you care so much, but it's knowing how to help, and that's really important around here, because as far as customer service is concerned and things like that, so that people don't linger on, you get them, help them on their way, and they can hopefully be self-sufficient at some point. But you've, you've always done a great job.
Thank you so much.
And I have a lot of faves around here. Everybody's my favorite, but you really do shine.
Thank you so much.
Quite a bit.
And thank you again for your time today.
Thank you. Crosby Rucker.
Congratulations. I can't see.
It doesn't work, don't worry about it. You can swing it.
Okay, yes, absolutely. Good evening, good afternoon. Felicia Crosby Rucker, Homeless Services Director. Good afternoon, Felicia Crosby Rucker, excuse my raspiness, Homeless Services Director. This afternoon, I just want to talk to you briefly about how Homeless Services Department contributes to community prosperity. One life event can change the path for any person from self-sufficiency to homelessness. Today, the face of homelessness is just not the person that is pushing the car down the street filled with their life possessions. It could be any single person or man that's here in plain sight, that's dressed just like any ordinary person, or looks like someone that's on this slide above us. In February 2019, the annual point in time count for our community was completed, and it revealed about 1,600 people were experiencing homelessness here in Hillsborough County. About 60% of those persons that are experiencing homelessness at that time were in shelters in our community. And a sidebar is, the county provides funding for five shelters that support persons experiencing homelessness. What we've determined, or what we've learned from that data, is that some of the leading causes of homelessness is financial hardship. People losing their jobs, car repairs, a major life event, something happens in their life, and it just, it's just a downward spiral. Medical and disability issues. People have mental health issues or challenges with disability, they can't get a job, they can't get approved for disability, or having challenges getting approved for disability, and that creates a hardship for them as well. Another challenge is housing. We've talked about that, and people have talked about that today. Housing challenges, access and affordable housing in the community, either not being able to afford the housing, or they have barriers in their background, or they have evictions, or they have convictions, or things that affect them from getting access into housing. Probably one of the, probably one of the, the highest number of calls that we get for our office in particular is the family relationship breakdowns. We get a lot of calls on a monthly basis, and it's coupled with financial hardship, medical disability issues, housing challenges, just the family dynamics breakdown. When you lose your income, when someone gets sick, or there's a death in the family, or there's mental health, or some kind of physical issue, medical issue that's going on, the family dynamics change, families break up, people end up on the streets, or end up in places that are not meant for human habitation. So one of the top questions people ask is, how do you access services? How do you get into the, how do you access services and get into the system to become self-sufficient when you're experiencing homelessness? We have community outreach teams out there with Tampa Police Department, Hillsborough County Sheriff Office. We actually partner with Metropolitan Ministries. We have a mobile brigade that the county provides funding to. They're out in the community, and they're actually targeting that 40%. People that are out there in the streets, they're in the shelters, in encampments, or in places that are not meant for human habitation. And what they do is engage people. And what we've learned is, over the last five years since our department has been established, we've been working with consultants, we've been working with Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative, and also, too, we've worked with the national expert, Mr. Philip Magano, and we realized that people, everybody doesn't want to go into shelter. And so shelter is not the only pathway to permanent housing and to access supportive services. That's why these outreach teams are so important. What we do is empower those outreach teams with resources and relationships so they can access financial assistance as well as housing, housing stability resources, and support services. So people on the streets can be met where they are, get assistance, and go from the streets directly into permanent housing. What does it look like if you go to a shelter? You can go to a community outreach team or any of our community service providers and go to a shelter. We have several shelters in our community, the ones that the county provides funding to, Metropolitan Ministries, the Salvation Army, ACTS, the Agency for Community Treatment Services, as well as the Daco Community Housing Solutions Center, and then we have one shelter that we fund beds in South County, Marion Martha House. There are other shelters in the system, but the five I named above are the ones that we actually, the county, our department manages contracts, and we partner with them. And with those five agencies, among those five agencies, those beds represent a little bit over a third, almost half of the beds in the entire shelter system. So what do you get when you go to a shelter? You get access to case management, you get temporary housing, a bed, a place to stay, you get access to food, clothing, you get access to healthcare. People are there, we partner with Hillsborough County Healthcare Services, and we have outreach teams that go to all of the shelters monthly to sign people up... teams that go to all of the shelters monthly to sign people up for the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan. Also too, we partner with the Sunshine Line, and people are able to apply for assistance, for bus passes as well, while they're at the shelter. All that, the resources are coming to the clients at the shelter. The clients do not have to go out or leave the shelter to access these services. Also too, one of the biggest game changers has been the SOAR, and this is basically an expedited process for people to get access to the disability assistance. Jean Early with Healthcare Services, he funds this initiative, and I believe there are six SOAR specialists out in the community. And they also are present in all of our shelters in the community. So if someone is on the Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan, and they're trying to get their disability, they don't have to go out and seek legal assistance or pay for an attorney to do that. They can go through our trained, certified SOAR staff and access that. And now they have INCOM. And that SOAR team has been recognized nationally, because they've been able to actually get people approved in less than ninety days, which is definitely unheard of and exceeds the national response. Also, people can get access to career SOARs and job opportunities while they're at the shelter. They get referrals, they go to job fairs, they help them with life skills and prepare them for employment as well. Then, get directed to housing, financial assistance, housing search assistance, and then that wraparound support services. So, people can go into shelter and access those same resources and get into permanent housing, or they can be met where they are, and the outreach teams can work with them and then get them into housing. What does success look like for us? For our department, our, basically, the only direct service that we provide is going to be the system navigation or the complex customer service calls that we get from a lot of commissioner offices, from state and federal officials. But, I'm sorry, success can look a number of ways for us. When we reunify someone with their family, that's success for us. When we have someone come here to our office that's experiencing homelessness, and we have access to our homeless management system, which is a database that we track where persons are receiving services, and we're able to link them with their case manager, or link them with a case manager and a service agency, that's success for us. Recently, actually, I got a call yesterday, that a veteran that had showed up in our office a couple of weeks ago, we went and did some checking in the system and realized that he was someone that Tampa Crossroads was looking for. He was a veteran, they had been looking for him, showed up at our office seeking help. We linked him with the case manager, outreach person with Tampa Crossroads, and I got a call yesterday that now they're on the path towards getting them into permanent housing. So that's success for us. Success can come in many ways. One case I want to highlight, is going to be Ms. Barbara. Barbara's fifty-eight years old, she's a disabled woman. She really didn't have any INCOM, very little work experience. For most of her life, she's been taking care of her mother, and she couldn't do anything else. Her mother was the owner of the home. Eventually, as her mother, healthcare, I mean, as her mother's health deteriorated, her mother was placed in a nursing home. What happened was that Barbara had no housing, no family support, no work experiences, and no work, no resources. And Barbara had nowhere to go. Barbara, at fifty-eight years old and disabled, ended up being homeless. What we were able to do was to link her with one of our community emergency bridge housing shelters through one of our partners. At the shelter, Ms. Barbara entered, received a case manager, they came up with a case plan, and each person that has, that goes into the shelter, each household that goes into the shelter, their case plan is set up and is unique to that person and their situation. She was set up, and she was set up with insurance through Hillsborough County Healthcare Plan. The agency was able to secure donated equipment to help with her mobility, as well as getting bus passes to assist with transportation to move around to appointments in the community. Also too, she was able to take advantage of the SOAR specialist and get her disability approved. Also, in working with the shelter, case manager at the shelter, she was able to access housing, and now Ms. Barbara is now living independently on her own in affordable, safe housing in our community. That's what success looks like to us. So what value does homeless services bring to the community? Well, under enhanced public safety, we provide over two hundred and seventy-two units of shelter, which includes case management and the supportive services that I've talked about. Those two hundred and seventy-two units actually equates to about four hundred and twenty beds in our community. Some of our shelters have beds, some of our shelters have rooms with multiple beds, some of our shelters have dormitory units with multiple beds, as well as some of our shelters just their rooms, units, and then their apartments that are in the community. Also, we enhance public safety, where we partner with law enforcement to provide community outreach and engagement. When we're getting a call about persons experiencing homelessness in a particular area, we're reaching out to law enforcement, and they're working, law enforcement liaisons are working with us, assessing the clients and linking them up to shelter, or linking them up on the path to permanent housing. Also too, another way we do enhance public safety, is we partner with local groups to provide temporary shelter during cold weather nights. The Cold Weather Shelter Initiative is a community-led initiative that started over twenty years ago. This is all grassroots level, this is community and faith-based groups that have come together, opened up their doors, their churches or their community agencies, and strictly volunteers, strictly volunteers, and the county comes in and offers support to help the agencies in doing that. Last season, from January to March of last year, we had ten cold weather shelter nights, and that's when the temperature hit forty degrees, including wind chill. We had ten cold weather shelter nights. We provided shelter, the community provided shelter for a hundred and thirty-five persons for each night, and about thirteen pets. Also, what we do is life enrichment and recreational opportunities. We partner with Social Services and the YMCA to provide thirty memberships annually and summer camp vouchers to families that were homeless. What we do is, our family shelter is Metropolitan Ministries that we provide funding to, and we have a staff person that works closely with their case managers on families that are exiting the Metropolitan Ministry Shelter, and what we do is match up and screen them for assistance to get the YMCA vouchers. This creates an opportunity for families to get engaged in the community, take advantage of the summer camps and other services that the WAT has. So that partnership with Social Services has really been good, and our families have really embraced that, and we appreciate the support. Also, the self-sufficient individual families, what we do also under there is coordinate and leverage internal resources for special initiatives. And some of the special initiatives that we do are the complex customer service cases. And those are some of the cases that we hear from commissioner offices, from Congresswoman Caster's office, or local representatives. And these are cases that require a little bit more time, it's not just a referral to a different agency. It's assessment, always trying to defer people and try and get them to do diversion and to go back home. But if not, what we do is coordinate efforts with multiple agencies. Recently, we worked with the commissioner's office on a family of eight, mom, dad, and six kids, who were refusing shelter, and, but they wanted to be housed. And that required a lot of time, a lot of staff time, coordinating with multiple agencies, coordinating with Sunshine Line, because a family of eight with no transportation, how do you move someone around, how do you move a family of eight around without, I mean, on a public bus? It's a challenge in itself. We work closely with Sunshine Line, we work closely with Feeding Tampa Bay, and also to the volunteers in the community who reached out, who were doing the best they could before it was brought to our attention, to try and help navigate the situation. Unfortunately, the family elected to move on, and we respect their wishes and their decisions, and we assisted them in partnership with Metropolitan Ministry and the community, and they relocated to Arkansas. Also too, we do some special initiatives like community response projects. I'm sure you've heard about the Friendship Palms Project, where the thirty residents had to relocate because the building was being sold. What we did is, we led an effort and established a community response team, and what we had to do was go in in less than thirty days, assess thirty people who had mental, physical disabilities, and relocate them, relocate them, help them relocate to other properties in our community. Also too, we work closely with Plant City with the rooming house issue, where we had no time to prepare, where there were twenty people, twenty adults and one child, that we had to relocate within a couple of hours because the rooming house was being closed down. So we really work together with our community. We step up when people ask and the community needs our help. We do a lot of coordinating, bringing partners together to make sure that people are getting into safe places, and also to try and get people into permanent housing. Another thing that we're proud of is our high-quality community assets. And we support about a hundred units, it's about five Housing First projects in our community. This is a game changer. We work with Steps Forward, Housing First, and they have about five projects in the community right now. And Housing First is an approach that our community has adopted, and we embrace that, and we appreciate that support. Also too, we have the set-aside units, like Cheryl talked about there earlier, under affordable housing, that in partnership with THHI, when Cheryl brings on new units online, there's a set-aside about ten percent of the units specifically for persons emerging from homelessness. And we appreciate that partnership, and I think it's a unique partnership. We have not seen anyone stepping up doing that, at least in the state of Florida. Also too, we complete over, in partnership with code enforcement, they complete over a hundred inspections annually for all of the shelters, all five shelters that the county funds, as well as the apartments. And for HUD funds, or federal or state funds, that fund shelters, typically, they require just an annual inspection of the shelters. Here, we made a conscious decision that we wanted to be more on top of our shelters and make sure that shelters were safe places for people to be staying in, and each one of our shelters, they're inspected monthly by code enforcement, and our twenty apartments that we have in the community, they're inspected as they turn over. So code is doing about a hundred inspections for us annually. So what I want to take a look at is, just, I'm not sure if you can see that, take a look at the population growth in relationship to our homeless population. This slide shows that over the last five years, of course, our population has grown between about thirty, thirty-five thousand per year, and I got the data from the planning commission. Between two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, it's a larger increase, about two and a half percent growth. But we're seeing about thirty new residents, thirty thousand new residents overall in the county every year. Our homeless population makes up less than one percent of that, one percent of the total population. What we've seen is a downward trend, that at our highest point in two thousand and fifteen, the homeless population made up point one-five percent of the total population, and now at two thousand and nineteen, based on the total population, our homeless count, I mean, our homeless data is about point eleven percent of one percent of the total population of persons experiencing homelessness. As I wrap up, I want to kind of share with you some of our key performance metrics in several areas. And what we know for sure is that, for our county-funded projects, our five shelters and contracts that we manage, sixty-nine percent of persons in one of our contracted beds are there for less than ninety days. The difference can be attributed to barriers to accessing housing, client interest in securing housing, as well as being able to secure funds for an affordable, income for affordable living. Ninety-two percent of persons that exit the county contracted beds, they're going to places that are other than homelessness. Forty-three percent of that ninety-two percent are going into permanent housing. This is great, and we all see that persons, people are moving into permanent housing, families are being reunited, or people are being placed in other places, assisted living facilities, or other nursing home-type facilities. What we know today is that homelessness is a complex issue that requires coordination, partnerships, and leveraging of resources at all levels. Despite the progress that we've made, there's still much more work for us to do, to ensure that our county has a safe and stable home for everyone. While the causes of homeless are complex, we are taking advantage of every opportunity out there, out here, to mitigate the causes by working with affordable housing, as they increase affordable housing in our community, with Sunshine Line, as we increase access to transportation, as well as working with healthcare services to ensure that our most vulnerable population have access to healthcare. Overall, our value in our work is to infuse all of these existing resources to the system of service to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring.
Commissioner Crosby-Rucker, let me, again, thank you for what you do. My office has referred, I know a lot of people to you, we did last week.
Yes, sir.
That was a tough one, and you're still working on it.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate that. So we appreciate everything that you and your office is doing for us in Hillsborough County. Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
I think we just need to call you the Angels Department, because I referred the family of eight to you after our community was doing everything it could to put a roof over these, this family, that was in crisis situation, and you just, you and your department just, every day that I have an opportunity to give you more work, which happens, you just outperform what anybody would actually expect. So I just want to thank you for what you do, what you're able to do in order to bring a family in crisis, which I'd love to get the stats on this, because people's perception of homelessness is the assumption that these are not working people, when in reality, I believe it would be helpful for people to recognize, these are working families that have found themselves falling on hard time.
Correct.
They aren't folks that are sitting on a couch one day and discover somebody stole their couch, you know? These are working families, and mothers and fathers that are taking care of their children, and trying to. And when we create that bridge, we help a community stay safer, healthier, and the well-being of the society as a whole. So, I'm just going to start calling you the Angels Department, because you're doing a great job, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much, too. And I work with seven ladies, I don't do it alone. There's seven ladies that I work with, it's definitely a team effort, and we rely on Social Services, Affordable Housing, THHI, and all of the other departments too, to help us make this happen.
Thank you.
Just, oh.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Commissioner Murman.
I thought you said Murman. Felicia, you're great. That's it. I mean, you're fabulous.
Great job today, Audrey, Felicia, Cheryl. I think all the scorecard presentations have really been spectacular. I appreciate the board being willing to include this on their agenda. Directors thought I was punishing them when I said you're going to present to the board and show people the value, and you're going to talk about success stories, but I think they're starting to understand this is a good thing. It allows them to tell their story and to really show that, you know, we're giving good value to residents. So I appreciate your willingness to hear it. And that concludes our regular items. We just have two items removed from consent for discussion. A two was removed by Commissioner Oberman.
Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
Excellent, thank you. This past Monday, we actually had our first reorganized Affordable Housing Board meeting, and of the newly reorganized board. And in an effort to bring back to this board the biennial plan that's been, that is required, we brought it to the first item on our agenda, besides addressing a few other items, but we quickly got to work. We had a very lively discussion, and I'm excited to work with this team, because everyone was very fully involved in the issue, and we will work to tackle the affordable housing crisis here in our community. Ahab had a number of actions that were taken that I'd like to bring to the board's attention. First, we decided to meet monthly on the second Monday of each month at nine AM. One, that'll allow our meetings not to be like six hours long, because we have six hours worth of work to do, but it'll also allow us to be more timely on issues that come up in front of the board for recommendation. Second, we have formed a subcommittee that has been tasked with reviewing our bylaws that are in need of being updated due to the reorganization and resolution, as well as due to the HOPE Affordable Housing Act. So we'll need to update our bylaws to reflect those additions to our toolbox. Lastly, the reason I pulled this item for discussion is the board had a very robust conversation on the biennial plan, of which I think we heard some public comment about it this morning, and made the recommendation to move the allocation of funding from moderate income category to very low income, which would increase the allocation for very low income from thirty percent to forty percent, and decrease the moderate income allocation to zero. The whole point of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board reorganization was to explore best practices on an equitable basis to increase access to affordable housing, i.e. additional housing units. Although I have confirmed with the county attorney that this recommendation is not inconsistent with the HOPE Affordable Housing Act, I am concerned that the economic and practical impact of this recommendation has not been vetted sufficiently by our staff, as the recommendation was only made two days ago. Frankly, my hope is, for this plan, is to increase the number of housing units through effective policies and strategies. And while I am appreciative of the plan, and it doesn't violate the code, I think it would be wise to be a little, to take a moment. it would be wise to be a little, to take a moment, to take a pause. Since the B.O.C.C. has until March of 2020 to approve this biennial plan, I would urge caution by this board to allow staff to better analyze the Affordable Housing Advisory Board's recommendation. And thus, we move to reschedule the public hearing while sticking to the March deadline to allow staff more time to analyze the effects of the recommendations of the biennial plan.
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Oberman, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to ask, what did we vote on before? I'm asking the county attorney. Cheryl Howell made a presentation to us.
Yes, I think the motion there, and Nancy can correct me, but it was to receive the report.
Well, which is, I mean, isn't that an acceptance?
Well, the ordinance requires the advisory board and the public hearing, so
Right.
You really need to have a public hearing and the advisory board before you can approve the plan finally.
I see, okay.
And this opens, oh, I'm sorry, to address your issue, it opens the public comment period. It gives us the ability to move forward on it and to receive the plan as required by the ordinance, but we're not, I think that before the B.O.C.C. says, oh, yep, looks good, let's go there, we need to understand the impact of the recommendation, so that it's fairly vetted by the staff.
Well, I think, and I'm going to make this statement again, that they are, in essence, an advisory board still, an advisory board, and this board makes the final decision. And they need to understand that, because what's, what I know of the members of that board, obviously, they all want things for themselves. I mean, you know, that's, that's how this whole process works, and I get that. But I will tell you, if we go to zero on the, I think it's the 80%, is it the 80%?
100%.
100%. 100%. We are shutting the door to police, firefighters, nurses, and teachers. And I can't in good conscience do that. So if the public hearing starts now, that's my comments. I think those are very, very important, and they are, these people have moved to South County. You could drive down any street and see three, four, five Hillsborough County deputy cars parked in the driveways. They're living in houses where they can afford. And, but until they get to that point, when they first get hired, and if you know what their salaries are, and you know what teacher salaries are, it's awful. You know, we've got to really keep that in mind, and not completely shut the door to those people.
Your motion was for this staff to vet this, am I correct? Because I have the concerns Commissioner Murman has. You just can't drop the bomb on people that, that are looking for workforce housing. And this eliminates it, basically. And this board is responsible of carrying out what we think is, was put forth by this whole HOPE Housing Fund. And the, your, the committee has to realize that we do have the final say-so on this, but you did ask, I think, in your motion, that your recommendation should be vetted by the staff, am I correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. But we have a mind for that, whatever staff brings back, this board has to say, have to say so. And I have a major concern with what their recommendation is.
Let me make it very clear here. One, we had a deadline, based on your request to come back in this time period, you know, with a recommendation on the draft, so that we could open the door for commentary. I'm not suggesting that door has, has, you know, has closed, but the original motion was to establish a public hearing on December 18th. Given that the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, who wants to come up with good recommendations for this board's approval, there was not, given our first meeting two days ago, time to do the appropriate vetting, but we were attempting to meet the schedule. The good news is, the ordinance allows for us to make sure we address the biennial requirement to be adopted by March, so there is some time. I wanted to share with you what the board wants to explore. I also thought, to be prudent, we should have an opportunity for the board to consider its recommendation. And there wasn't, there's literally just not enough time to do that. But I also didn't want to leave it out there and miss the deadline that you had asked for. So it is my recommendation that we hear what they mentioned, what they suggested as a policy, but also ask staff to come back and help us understand the impact of that recommendation before we have a public hearing to say yea or nay. Because while I don't want the plan rejected at this point, I think there's an opportunity for us to get where we want to go in terms of an effective, workable, affordable housing strategy over a two-year plan, so.
We have a motion by Commissioner Oberman, second by Commissioner Smith, seeing to further discussion. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. It just sounds to me like we're just having more time. It doesn't hold up any investment that we make, it doesn't hold up, doesn't do anything like that. It also isn't a, either an affirmation of what the committee decided. Now, I don't think is the time necessarily to debate it. I'd like to definitely hear what the staff, hear what the committee, have time to do this. If it were holding up our investment, I might be a little more reticent about this, but I definitely want to postpone and, or I support the motion, because I want an opportunity to do the most vetting possible within the timeline.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
There is a lot of public interest in this issue, and a lot of enthusiasm about our first-ever HOPE Affordable Housing Trust Fund, also an acknowledgement in the community awareness that this is a crisis situation. And so I was kind of concerned about the timeline between, you know, today and your new board, and this setting the hearing for our very next meeting before Christmas. I would very much like to have more time, since there's, we've got plenty of time. So, so let's afford the public more time to look over this and weigh in. I myself was hoping that with our first two-year plan, we could get to 50% for that low 50% just, just for the first two-year plan, to address the neediest. So I'm very interested in looking over the Ahab's recommendation, and I do appreciate your steering through the rocky shoals of political pressures and citizen input on all sides of that, and appreciate you putting that board together to work with. So let's, let's, let's let that breathe and have some work, and I think it's a great idea to bring it, to hear back from staff before we choose A or B, and see if there's, you know, any, any further adjustment or anything else that needs to be done. Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Oberman, second by Commissioner Smith, seeing to further discussion. Please, call your vote.
Commissioner Murman? Motion carried, five to zero.
Mr. Murman?
Excuse me, sorry.
Okay. And the last item removed from consent for discussion is A14, removed by Commissioner Kemp.
Mr. Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I removed, yeah, A14 to do with the calendar, and I'm going to go at it one more time. I had raised this issue at the beginning of the year, but I think that I want to raise it again for discussion. Last year, during what is recognized as the lame duck land use session, it occurs after the elections but before the investiture, it's a very short period. We, we do it very quickly here. But on the agenda last year, two of the most controversial land use items we had last year were placed on the land use meeting after the election but before the investiture of the newly elected commissioners. And despite the pleas, we had the longest land use meeting I ever had in my two years here, by a long time. We had lots of residents, we had lots of concern, despite the pleas of numerous residents. The items that were there that were extremely controversial were approved by relying on the votes of outgoing commissioners. I think it made a bad impression on the public. I don't think it's, it's good public policy. And it was criticized in the newspaper, and I'll pass that out to you. This was the headline from the editorial, was Hillsborough Commissioner's Parting Gift for Phosphate at the Time. I know that Commissioner Miller, you couldn't be present at that meeting, I believe. And I don't think that we should allow that to be happening again, should it? I just don't think the opportunity should be there. It's just bad public policy in my mind. So I'm going to move that only item, so that we can move a lot through. We don't have to necessarily not have things happen, because most of what we do is on consent anyway, or is passed with consent. There's not a lot of items that become controversial. So I move that only items with unanimous consent may be heard on the November 10th land use agenda, and that all other matters should be continued to December.
Ms. Ferris, come here a minute, please, ma'am. When the elections occur in November of 2020, when does the, those of us that are leaving after those elections, when are we no longer members of this county commission?
The Hillsborough County Charter provides that the newly elected commissioners, whether they're incumbent elected or new to the board, will take office the second Tuesday after the Tuesday that they were elected.
Okay.
In this case, it was the November 3rd is the election day. They would be sworn in on the 17th, so you would serve, for instance, and Commissioner Murman, until November 16th.
November 16th midnight?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. So therefore, Commissioner Kemp, you're saying that the two of us that are here should shirk our responsibilities as county commissioners, because of mere fact you called us quote-unquote lame duck? I think that is absolutely wrong. I'm not going to sit here and shirk my responsibilities as a county commissioner, because the mere fact is that the elections are held in November, and my responsibility ends at midnight on the 16th, so I should have every opportunity as a county commissioner to do what I'm supposed to do. And I don't think the public, I don't think the public would appreciate the mere fact is that I'm sitting here, or not sitting here, after the elections and drawing a paycheck and not doing what I'm supposed to do. I think that is absolutely absurd to let that even happen, to even talk about that. So therefore, I'm asking you, please, please do not support this, because the mere fact is, is that as elected officials, you all are going to get there one day, maybe sooner than you think, but you all are going to get there one day, that after those elections, you're still going to be a county commissioner, and you're still going to have to have responsibilities of the public. You still have to carry forth your responsibilities of what you're supposed to do. And by the way, not only does our child have trained us what to do, your responsibility and your job is outline the statutes of the state of Florida. Outline the statute of state of Florida, and it tells you when you're not supposed to be doing that, and the longer that's when you're not in office. And our office serves, you serve in office until the third, the second Monday at midnight after a November election. So I'm asking you, please do not support this, because what you're doing is telling the public, those of us that are leaving office after those elections should not doing, be doing what we're supposed to do, and by the way, still pay them. Commissioner Oberman, you recognize?
I agree with both of you, to tell you the truth, because I do believe, you know, when we swear to do the job, we do the job. I also think that human nature is fascinating, and, and things occur when we give people an opportunity to find an advantage. And having a land use meeting that sets something in motion that we have to live with possibly for decades and decades and decades beyond someone's oath of service, offers an opportunity for abuse. And I think it can be easily avoided if we move the last land use meeting to the Tuesday before an election. For example, in the 2020 calendar, there is a Tuesday available. There's actually two Tuesdays available for land use meetings. You still have a person who is duly elected and sworn to office making a decision, and you have, you don't have an opportunity for someone who said, I voted for this person who's now in office, and they don't have a say in what's being adopted, because they haven't been sworn in yet. So while I don't disagree with you, yes, every, every one of us that are elected are required to carry the oath of office that we carry. But by eliminating the challenge, by having the land use, last land use meeting that sets in stone something for a very long period of time, I can't tell you how many times I've been told, it's already been approved, you can't do anything about it, sorry, you're going to get sued, sorry, that's the way it is. Those are very uncomfortable places for someone who's been sworn to serve our public in its best interest. So to avoid that kind of confusion, I'd like to amend your motion to suggest that, that the last land use meeting be the Tuesday prior to an election. It's not to say to take away a meeting, it's to offer an opportunity to schedule it prior to an election day, if that's an option. That way, I mean, there's opportunity for two land use meetings in October. October's a 31-day month, unless it's really weird. You know, we have control over what we put on our agendas for those time periods. And if it doesn't put a commissioner in a difficult position, I don't see the harm in actually adjusting our schedule to accommodate that opportunity to allow not only those serving to do the best job they can, but also to allow voters to say, the first time someone that they've elected gets a chance to address this issue, they're, they have an opportunity to do so.
We have an amendment by Commissioner Oberman. Is there a second? Is there a second? Dies for lack of a second.
I will.
Dies for lack of a second.
I'll second.
Dies for lack of a second.
I will withdraw my motion to make a new motion.
Commissioner Kemp, was there a question?
And my motion will be that we set the land use meeting on the last Tuesday in October, and I think that that's a, I support that concept, since others feel, you know, it is not meant to be personal, I just think it is bad public policy in terms of how we move forward. And you were absolutely correct in identifying the land use, that the, we do have a B.O.C.C. meeting in that time, and I think that the B.O.C.C. meeting is, you know, perfectly legitimate to have in that time, to move forward on it with all the items and agenda items. But the problem with land use is, you're right, it's permanent forever, you cannot reverse it, it is irreversible, it is, I think it is a, I think we should be doing it in the final Thursday, so I'll make the, or Tuesday, I'll make the motion to do the meeting in the final Tuesday before the election.
And motion by Commissioner Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize again?
I've said my piece.
Yes, and I understand very well what you're saying, and I feel you, the responsibility for being a county commissioner. I lived through that last land use agenda, and it was just record-breaking huge, and the impression for the public is that things were put there because there's a lack of accountability, things, things that if they had been before the election, would have been matters for discussion by those candidates that were still running, the commissioners that were here that were running for office, those issues would have been topics of discussion in the debates by their challengers, by them, they would have to be then answering to the voters in that election. And, and instead of that, the matters were put on a, on the one land use hearing of the year, that they are not accountable, that those commissioners are no longer accountable to the voters. to the voters. And the permanency, whatever is decided in the county commission meetings, it has a possibility of, of the new board coming in and rescinding. In fact, we did that. But land use, no, that's, it's done. And I think the motion that you crafted is, I supported it at the end of last year because of these same issues, said the same things, but the, the, you know, the one you, you brought forward of, of, well, let's just have a consent agenda, that, that was a way of getting at it, but another way is, is what you've suggested. So I think this helps the public feel that, that these land use issues, particularly when, you know, there are, these are often matters involving special interests that are very involved in campaigns. It is. And, and there is, at, at, at the very least, that perception that some of these decisions involve these special interests that are involved in campaigns. And so I think it is, it would be just good government to have our last land use hearing pushed up a couple of weeks in October, and everybody can vote on it, as just the same as they could the next week or two later after the election.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize.
So that's the exact point. What's the difference of two weeks? Because you're saying a political decision is going to be made if it's two weeks later? Is that what I'm hearing? Because I find it disrespectful to Commissioner Miller and myself that this, we're even having this discussion. Because you guys, if, if you really don't want to vote on something, then move to defer it, or try and get action on the board to take something off the agenda to the next land use meeting in December. But to change our calendar for, because we're concerned a political decision after an election is going to be made, I mean, that, it's absurd. I'm making a substitute motion to defer this item till we have a full board present to discuss this among all seven members. Because this involves all seven of us, not five. And I'm making a substitute motion.
Commissioner Merman has made a substitute motion, is there a second? I'll pass it, you all, I'll second it.
I think it was clear that, that this is what the issue was, and the commissioners decided, or chose not to be here for this discussion. So I'm fine with carrying this out now.
Did you have commentary, Commissioner Merman? Okay, so the amendment.
No, we're going to substitute.
We have substitute amendment, motion rather, sorry, I'll get better at this. Substitute motion is to, do you want to restate your motion, please?
To defer this item.
Until we have a full board? So in other words, make sure it's on a time certain so that it doesn't end up at the end of the day?
Right.
Please record your vote.
Motion carried, three to two. Commissioners Kemp and Smith voted no.
Okay, so that particular issue is deferred, but we're still on the, the A 14. I want to bring something forth concerning January. We have Hillsborough Day on the 14th, the 15th of January. And some, I know some members would like to go up on that Tuesday before Hillsborough Day. And we have a land use meeting scheduled on that Tuesday before the 15th. So in speaking with Mr. Merrill, there are a couple of things we can do. One is to move it to the 13th of January, or move it to the 21st, which is a week later of January, or to the 27th of January. The 20th, 20th, the, the, Mr. Merrill's concern with the 21st is that, that also that week we have a, a, a county commission meeting and feel that those two big meetings that week could be problematic with briefings and lanes along those lines. But I, I do know that some of us would like to be in Tallahassee on the 14th. So we, we need to decide if we, if we're going to do this, or we're going to leave the land use meeting on the 14th of January, or move it to one of the days that Mr. Merrill has recommended, either 13th, 21st, or 27th. Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Actually, I was going to bring this item up as well because I would like to be there for opening day and had planned on going up for Hillsborough Day. My only concern about the 13th, it'll be my next Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting on the 13th, is our next actual meeting at 9:00 PM, 9:00 AM. I do recognize that having it the day after a holiday is, is a challenge, but I'm, I would be fine with moving it to the 21st.
Let me ask this question. Any of you have issues with having a land use meeting and then two days later having a county commission meeting in the same week?
I have five board meetings in the first week of, of the month. I'm used to that.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Merman?
Yeah, I have port, board on the 21st. Can we do, like on the 13th, could we do a 1:00 land use meeting and not have it be at 9:00?
Some people want to leave that day headed to Tallahassee, say, be there to Tallahassee that morning.
Oh, before the 14th?
Yes. So the other, the only other day we have is the 27th.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is there any?
Do we have that part operations and safety committee that you put me on?
You asked for it, I put you, you asked for it, you got it.
On Monday at 9:00 AM to the 27th?
Well, in that case, we're going to have to leave our land use meeting on the 14th. And, well, if you want to go to Tallahassee and, and miss your land use meeting, that's entirely up to you. But that's, looks like we're going to leave it on the 14th, we're going to have to leave it on the 14th. Okay.
I, I, the 13th at 1:00.
The 13th at what?
At 1:00.
I said, I said that because the mere fact is that I know that on the 14th, there was some talk of some of us wanting to be there that, that, that morning on the 14th for the opening of a session, which means if we run late on that, that Monday, a lot of us won't be able to get there, or if we travel, travel late at night, and some of us are too old to be driving at night.
So what time do you need to go to Tallahassee? Well, how about at 1:00? About 1:00? 4:00? We could just be right?
Is there an objection to having a land use meeting on Monday the 13th at 11:00? That means you're going to work through lunch.
Might be while we're here.
I don't know if staff wants you eating while you're here because they might have to clean up, but, you know. Is there objection to meeting on, on the 13th of, 13th of January at 11:00? Is that what we're going to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Without, yeah, without objection, we'll meet on the 13th. Land use meeting will be held on the 13th of, you want to hear this? On the 13th of January at 11:00 AM. Okay, all right.
If you're in the line.
So now we're back on the adoption of the calendar. Is there a motion to adopt the calendar?
I'll move to adopt the.
As a motion by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Merman to adopt the 2020 calendar. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
I, I have a question, point of order. I just want to know, in adoption of the calendar, so we're not adopting that land use day, we're waiting until?
Before March. Make a modification.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So you're adopting the calendar except for that?
Yes.
One, okay.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
Okay. That just leaves future discussion items.
Any future discussion items? Future, future discussion items? Any? Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
I'd like to ask the staff to come back at the next board meeting with a workshop scheduled to address the policy issues that we need to address when it comes to mobility fees, land use, impact fees, and water infrastructure fees. I know we have one mobility fee workshop scheduled for December. All right? And then, but there were several outstanding workshop-related presentations that we've either looked to have or have had, where we haven't addressed what our decisions are in those directions. I'd, I'd like to see, now that we have a 220 calendar, and we know what that looks like, and we have outlined at least tentatively, hold spaces for workshops. I'd like the staff to bring back to us at the next board meeting, a plan for the outstanding policy conversations and workshops for the next three months, and with identification of what, in what order we're going to address those issues. It does two things, in my opinion. It gives staff deadlines to be able to hit, two, and it gives us the ability to really vet or bring to the table the professionals we think we need to hear in order to help us in designing effective policy going forward.
Any other future items? Seeing none, we adjourn.
Thank you.
Okay.